And get started. So I'll call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools for December the first to order. And per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public can't physically access the school committee, but you can view it via the Zoom link on our agenda. And the, at least a section of it will be posted on our YouTube page, the part that's actually the public thing. So this is like our, this is supposed to, for the, oh, here's John in the, John's in the attendees if we can promote him. So for members of the public who are here, this is normal, this is supposed to be our school committee retreat. So it's a different type of a meeting. It's usually like a training or internal workings. We don't make any public decisions or deal with any public business. But given what happened yesterday, we amended our agenda yesterday and posted that so that we could talk about the COVID issues at the high school. And then the other unusual thing is that we've been meeting in person, but we usually meet at the high school. And a lot of us have family that are in the high school. So given all those things, we're meeting on Zoom, which we're totally allowed to do. It's just not, doesn't look regular because we've been in person lately. So are any of our attendees going to be recording? And if so, can you let me know so I could notify the rest of the public? If you can just raise your hand. Okay. So like I said, it's an unusual agenda, but we're going to start right away. We've got Scott McGann with us and I'm just going to turn it over to you, Lori, if you can just fill the public and the rest of the committee in on, on the last two days.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll talk a little bit about that and then Scott can jump in as well. And then Scott's going to give us a brief update and explain a little bit of the situation in Falmouth. But yesterday morning, we did receive information that we had a positive case in our Falmouth High School, School Community. It seemed a little confusing, I know, because the student was actually tested on November 20th. And so the test results did take that long. And I think Scott's going to add a little to the amount of time it's taking for the test results to come back. So we did have to do the contact tracing. This was our first time. I give our high school team incredible amount of kudos on how well they were able to swiftly be able to identify students and staff that were considered close contacts. And we had a team of our public health nurse and some additional nurses that jumped in. And we had quite a few phone calls and I give them a lot of credit on how quickly they were able to contact everyone. We removed the students from the classes. Parents, thank you very much for your support. Everyone was understanding. We, we really appreciate that partnership. And then picked up the students and in the meantime, we would not have had to close the school because we were, the contact tracing worked as it should. However, when we had the number of staff that we needed to quarantine, we did not have enough substitutes or additional staff in the building, even, you know, staff assistants, subs, teaching assistants, we did not have enough additional people in the building to be able to cover for the staff that was out. And so unfortunately and regrettably, I did have to, I had to switch everybody to remote, you know, yesterday, and we called for the buses early to get everyone home because we just didn't have enough staff members. And this is something that we've talked, it's nothing that we were surprised about. This is something that we have been talking about for quite some time, that we did think that this was actually going to be the issue that was going to come down, that we did not have enough staff. And even though my team's done an incredible job, give a shout out to, you know, Joannie, Santa, our HR director, because she has just worked around the clock to find all the subs that we have placed full time in each of our buildings. But there's a number of people out and even though we have five full-time subs at the high school, all five of those subs were already covering classes for staff members that were out. So just the number of staff we needed, we just, we couldn't make it work yesterday. So that is what's going to happen. You know, it was our first time. We debriefed after Scott and I debriefed, Principal Gans and I debriefed, the public health nurse, we went through everything. Could we improve a little bit on some of the steps? Absolutely. There's always room for improvement. We look to do that. We will get better. But it was the, the last minute nature of the information that I think kind of put everything, you know, in a, in a frenzy to get, get things done quickly. And I just want to, you know, just share that in this situation, the family just received the information as well. And, you know, but if we could have known the information earlier, right, it would have just helped. So I just want everybody to know that Jennifer Ricefelder, our public health nurse, is checking her phone every day. I am checking emails, phone calls. It doesn't matter if it's an evening. It doesn't matter if it's three in the morning. It doesn't matter if it's a Saturday or a Sunday or even Thanksgiving Day or any holiday. We are checking and we're responding as quickly as we can. Yes, you might reach Jennifer's voicemail, but she is checking them. So I getting, and getting back in a timely manner. So I just want to just encourage everyone is, I know that it's difficult when you receive information that you may be positive, you know, you have to go through, you know, your own processing of that information. And I know that can be difficult, but somewhere in that process, I just want to encourage everyone to remember just contact this, whichever, whoever you have the email, if it's a principal or you've, you've got, you know, Jennifer's number on your refrigerator, which I hope it is there, or it's plugged into your phone. Just, you know, or myself, email what I, we will respond. We will get back to you so that we can do things on time. Scott's on, he's available. He's on my speed dial. He answers at any time through the weekend evenings or whatever. And I, I appreciate it because we collaborate a lot on every single case, just a double check to make sure that we're making the right decisions and following through. So this really is a very collaborative process. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that we were able to hire a public health nurse. The support's incredible, but the incredible support from the town is just so appreciative as well. I do want to, before Scott starts talking, I do want to let everyone know that we had a similar situation today. The, it was at the high school as well. We had another member of our school community that was, that received the test results that also had taken the test before the holiday break, just as we have encouraged everyone, but did not receive the test results until this morning. And once we knew that, we followed the same process. Of course, we didn't have the, the students in the building. So it was, it was a, we were able to follow that process a little bit more methodically. We were able to contact all students and staff that had been in contact and they are in quarantine and everything. So the process is working. What I wish would happen is that we got the test results back earlier, right? Because that would make a huge difference and that's nobody's, you know, certainly no, nobody's involved in our school community. You know, whether it's, you know, parents, staff or, you know, students, that's just what we're dealing with right now. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Scott, so, because I think he can explain a little bit more about this.
Hi, everybody. Hear me okay?
Hi Scott. Yep. Here you go. Great. Thanks for joining us again.
Yeah. So the, the problem with testing isn't getting the test. Actually Dylan Fernandez and a couple of state reps and senators got some extra funds. There'll be another test site set up within a week in Falmouth that'll be open to everybody. It's not necessarily getting a test. And when I show you a slide in a second, we did over 3,000 tests in 14 days. It's the ability of the lab to process it. And so that's where you're getting the delays. There's so much, there's only so much lab that can space, that can run tests only so often. And since Massachusetts is up in cases, even more so than, than the Cape, or at the same rate roughly now, that it's just been a difficulty getting the PCRs done and run through the machines. So there is a bit of a delay. So I'm going to, if it's okay with you, I'm going to, I'm going to take the screen over. I apologize. I didn't have a lot of time today to, to make up a decent PowerPoint presentation, but I think a picture's worth a thousand words.
We'll take whatever we can get. Thank you.
Okay. So are you seeing it now?
Yes.
Our current case count has jumped up a lot over the last four days. It's 420. We have a cluster outbreak in a long-term care with over 30 cases. So we're averaging about four cases per day where we were averaging in the summer, maybe eight a week, 10 a week, somewhere in there. So we're, we're about twice as many cases. The number of 420, we would be somewhere around, I'd say 385 or something like that without that, without that cluster that's occurring. And that happened really quick. And unfortunately, that's how it happens is, you know, you have an individual go to work asymptomatic and that's what ended up happening. This is the state, I always like to show you, this is the state, is a little bit of a delay in this because it's the two previous weeks. So this is be the timeframe between 11:08 and 11:21. That even though we had 40 cases in that timeframe, which is high for Falmouth, we were still at a positivity rate under two, which is key. You want to be under two. Once you get over two, it does tend to multiply a lot quicker. And about 3,000 cases. So we're not where we were, you can see that steady climb from mid-November when I was telling you it was all roses and, and butterflies earlier on in September. It's not at that point. It's not at that point at all in Massachusetts. So we did remain green. I could tell you with the long-term care outbreak that we've had will be probably in the yellow. To get into red, you'd have to be over 43 cases roughly and also over 5% positivity. I don't necessarily, don't know how many tests we had. I know over the last two weeks with the holidays and people getting tested. I know convenient MD and CVS really got hit hard with a lot of test requests. They're full. They're taking, you know, I think they've got a waiting list. If I'm, I don't know that for sure, but I've heard that anecdotally. So the test numbers probably going to be even higher than the 3,000. We've been consistently in the 25 to three, it might even be higher. So that may drive the positivity down, right? So, you know, the more people that get tested that are healthier, that is going to drive that number down. But it has to get over 5% positivity to go red. Going to the weekly case trend, you can see we had that beautiful smooth sailing. We had five-minute conversations in our previous meetings up in August and September. We're not at that point right now. I think we're averaging right around 25 to 35 cases per week. Again, that long-term brings that number way up and this week is not over. That could, that could rise. I think we're going to be somewhere in that 28, 35 range for total cases at a given week, at least this next couple of, next week or so. Of course, people traveled, you know, not everybody did stay at home for Thanksgiving. A little nervous about what may happen at the end of next week, end of this week, early next week. We'll see. Hopefully, everybody did, did, did their best to, to lower their chances of getting COVID. If you look at the total case trend from day, you know, weekly, you can see that, you want that to be flat and you can see that it's really sort of spiked up. So that's kind of where Falmouth is. I have to show you their whole county. We did not have a bad as a couple of weeks as Barnstable who had almost 300 cases in 14 days. That's a lot of cases. So we were 40, we might be, you know, so we'll be something by a higher than that when they take the two weeks. Cause that took a week earlier and in November, we weren't so bad. You can see that some of our towns on the Cape have been red and yellow. I think will be some probably if it stays sort of where it is. The cases for non-long-term care have sort of leveled off. We're getting that three, four cases a day. We haven't seen that go to eight, go to 12 sort of, sort of thing yet. Anyway, hopefully it doesn't happen that way. So we're not in a good, as good a spot as we were. You know, I think we'd be naive to think we were going to stay at less than five or 10 cases in a given week after what's going on in the state. We are not an island where we can put up, you know, and not have any ships come over to us, you know, it is what it is. We're still doing better than average. The positivity in the, of that same timeframe in possible counties over 3%. I think it's mass positive tests are over 3% and counties like one and a half. So we're still kind of, we're still, we're still holding our own compared to our friends and neighbors. So that's it on cases. I could take any questions. I would talk a little bit about contact tracing. Contact tracing, a case enters Maven. Okay. Maven is the Massachusetts Epidemiological Network. And that's where the case gets seen by us. We hope that's done quickly. That's where your delay is. So we can't do anything until it hits Maven. The VNA is not going to do anything to CTC. They're not going to do anything. It's not a case until it enters. The VNA will either choose to take the case based on their caseload and if it's off hours, it defaults to the CTC. The CTC right now has sent out a notice that they're trying to reramp back up. I say reramp because they had ramped up nicely in the spring, but it derampified, I just made up a word, over the summer. So they need to ramp back up because they're slowing us down. At least I can see that on my, my terms. Okay. So I'm, if you guys don't know me, I'm one that likes to take the bull by the horns. So I am starting to make those phone calls ahead of the CTC because I am not going to wait. So the, the, you know, the CTC is not very happy right now. We had a couple of little emails go back this afternoon. They're like, oh, if you want to take it over, I don't want, the, the contact tracing is seven-page form that takes 45 minutes. I need to know about five basic questions. Who's your contacts? Where do you work? Do you have kids in school? Right? Some of the basic questions I want to know really, really quickly. So I've set up a form. I've got my public health nurse that I've hired over the summer, Kathy Gwynn. And I've got my assistant health agent, which I hired in September. They're going to be making some calls early on. We're not doing the full seven pages, the 45 minutes. I just need to know quickly. I can't wait five days for them to call or, or they call right away, but it's basically a text and a call and a lot of loss to follow-ups. They don't have the time because of their caseload to be micromanaging. Well, I can handle 30 phone calls a day. Well, maybe not, but we're going to do it anyway. So we're going to try to double up the efforts of the CTC. I don't have any, it's not the VNA, the VNA can follow them through. But the VNA, you know, can't, there's an automatic after a certain time every night. If the VNA has not chose to take the case on it defaults to the CTC. So it doesn't get lost. And the CTC will catch back up in another week or two. And this may only need to be me a week or two, but we're going to reramp. I'm getting on every case right away. And that's where Jen and I have a relationship and Lori is, we're jumping on anything I see under the age of 18 or, you know, now through these phone calls, you know, we're with the school, if there's any school age. Generally speaking, there's, you know, a half a day or a day, you know, it takes a while for the data to dump into Maven. So it's really important if any parents are listening that they, if they do get a positive, that they would take care of that right away and call us. Just because this whole system is not perfect though. It's not perfect. And so, you know, that's where we're going to jump in and do some extra, extra contact tracing regardless of our ability to, you know, have the time to do it. So we do jump on the cases, Jen and I and Kathy and Lori, we, we go back and forth quite often. We've been extremely successful up to date. To talk about what happened this week, that, that, that case popped into a different town, did not pop into Falmouth. Therefore, I know not what I do not know. I don't know what I don't know. So I don't know what's happening in a different town. So that happened to be contact tracing that was going in a different direction, not involving Falmouth. So that's where some of the difficulties are with contact tracing. It's only as good as the information provided us. And since the address listed on that test was not Falmouth, it did not go to Falmouth. It goes to that other town. The, the VNA happened to be tracking it with that town and asking that town if that child went to school. But it's not going to know to go to another town per se, because that's not generally how it would be working. And that's where I think what Lori alluded to, you know, things can be improved. We're going to have to figure out a way to kind of help with that. I can't help things I can't see.
That's a huge, we have so many school choice kids, you know, and rightfully so, because who wouldn't want to come to school here? But that creates a whole nother level of problems for you.
Yes, it does. The cases are easily shared. Luckily, the VNA does most of our surrounding towns. So may, you know, that's not going to be as hard as you think because we're not, we don't live in a, you know, in a bubble. There are some towns that do their own contact tracing like Sandwich. All right. So Sandwich has to do it and know to do it. But the VNA, you know, maybe it, it's easy to over email. So we'll just have the VNA over email if there happens to be, you know, something. You know, we'll be able to do some of our phone calls and, you know, if the person says they go to school in another town, I'm calling that other town. I'm not going to leave the other town hanging.
Right.
So we're just going to work on, this is something that I thought of over the weekend. I should have been eating turkey, but I was thinking about contact tracing. But I was, was what to do with the CTC and their, their inability to really get down deep into it. It's kind of hackneyed. And so we're just going to try to streamline internally. But as far as the relationship with, I mean, we're, we've caught, you know, to be naive to think we're not going to catch, we're going to catch everything perfectly. Just doesn't happen that way. You know, baseball, you know, if you hit, if you get a hit, one out of three at bats, you're considered a Hall of Famer. We'll have better odds than that, but you know, we're going to, things will get missed. And, you know, part of the thing is contact tracing is only good as the information that I get. So if Mr. Ryder hangs up on me when I contact trace him and he says, this is a right-wing conspiracy, I'm not going to get much out of him. But if I go over to Lisa Hart and she gives me her life story, I got a lot of information, right? So it's really only as good as the information. And quite frankly, getting hung up on and not getting a hold of some people does happen. And if that happens to be somebody at school age, it's going to be difficult if we're not getting the information, right? So it's not perfect because it relies on humans to provide us the information that they may or may not be willing to give.
And that's true, even if they're not talking to you, you know, like, I feel like our whole system is dependent upon people calling us and telling us that they had a positive test. And if they're, you know, sick or dealing with someone who's really sick or just trying to manage and they don't make that call, then there's nothing we can, you know, there's nothing we can do. And that's, that feels really powerless. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, Scott.
No, I mean.
Anybody have questions for, I'm sure there's a million of them. Leah, go ahead.
Thanks, Scott. So as I was saying, the last time we, we met, that where I work is Martha's Vineyard and we've had such a huge increase in cases. And so kind of thinking about how, what I know now in how to support Falmouth as a community would be some things of looking at the importance of quarantining when you are awaiting a test result. And I think that's something that, one thing that I realized that over at Martha's Vineyard, we weren't doing a really good job, job about was letting people know that they should be quarantining when they're waiting that test result. And I think that that in itself, if people can take on that responsibility, it would enable that contact to be eliminated, at least for those days when you're awaiting a test result. Especially now that the test results are taking longer. Two questions I have for you.
Let me, can I answer that one first one before I lose my train of thought? It's also critical that when you're a case and we're contact tracing you, that you're not bummed about spending any information about your friends, family or other ones. That's the bigger, that's just as big an issue of not sharing, like the, you know, so that's the one thing I want to add to that.
Right. So the contact tracing is really important in cooperating with the contact tracing and ensuring that you're sharing that information. But one thing that I was part of last weekend was a workforce forum for workforce, really for people who are multilingual or bilingual and getting information out to them. And I was wondering about for Falmouth right now, if there is some outreach for our multilingual workforce or multilingual community members, what that looks like and if it's happening.
You mean outreach and trying to get ahead of it? No. As far as providing information on isolation, quarantine, we have it in eight or 10 languages. So the CTC has, you know, if the case, if the VNA can't do it for a language issue, that's where the CTC would be valuable because they have more of that. So as far as outreach, not, nothing per se, like as far as, you know, trying to talk to different community groups. I'm, it'd be a good idea if anybody provides me somebody who they fail at or group that, that would be a good idea. By all means, we can do that, you know?
Yeah. Cause looking at the statistics around immigrant communities and how hard they've been hit with COVID, it probably would be a good outreach in the community. And so I guess those were my two, the workforce though around, so English-speaking workforce. So like people who own their own landscaping businesses. And has there been outreach around that with like the businesses, local businesses?
Well, when guidance changes, if it's, if it's a sector-specific guidance where I have information, I send out to wherever I can send it out to and try to get it out there. But no, I don't know everybody and everything in town, you know, so it's sometimes you don't get everybody, you're not going to catch everybody. I mean, understanding that COVID's here, I don't know how many people don't understand, you know, I guess the details about quarantine, isolation and not following that is, is one way to do it. I mean, if any suggestions anyone has, we're open for it, you know? Unfortunately, I'm kind of like the guy, the guy with the finger in his dyke trying to keep the floodwaters. It's hard to get ahead of it, right? As opposed to trying to keep Band-Aids on all of the issues. So.
Yeah. I wonder if there's a local business organization that, or that could work with local businesses and the workforce to see if we could get information out because that directly impacts our schools, right? So all of this impacts our schools. If, if it's within the community of this community spread, it's going to come into the school. So thank you, Scott. Maybe I, I'll try to see what kind of resources I can come up with and I'll be in touch if I can find some. Thanks.
Melissa, did you have your hand? Go for it.
Yes, thanks very much. Scott, thank you for being on top of the CTC. And I don't want to say calling them out for not being a little bit more swift, but as a healthcare professional, I appreciate it. And I also appreciate your, I know that you said that your screen sharing was quick and off the cuff, but I still found it very helpful. So thank you. I work in Barnstable, so I see those numbers every day and it's been eye-opening. Getting back to, we know that the testing, it has been readily available. And I feel like you might've touched on this a few months ago, or if not, I definitely had thoughts of this because before I was a nurse, I was a chemist and I ran on mass Bexan on GCs. And I knew that the labs were going to get bogged down. So I'm sure that this is more of a general question. Perhaps I should have logged into the select board meeting last night, but have we considered asking the National Guard for help? Do they even have the instruments needed to run the rapid as well as the regular COVID-19 tests? Is that part of your conversation that you've had with Dylan as well as Representative Dever?
No, not, the National Guard was used within long-term care facilities were hit early on. I think that might still be available for them. The long-term cares go directly to the state, to a state epidemiologist. I don't get involved with the contact rate, you know, we don't, they, they go directly to an Epi. And in terms of, I mean, if, if they're going to use their staff at the, at the, at the, you know, if they're going to, the state's going to start using it. It wouldn't come to Falmouth. Our positivity in our cases don't match what's going on in a lot of these other communities. They would be going elsewhere. They'd be using, you know, that type of stuff. As far as testing, I think we're in so much better shape than any other community around for testing that I think we're going to be the lowest priority. The reason why we're getting testing, another additional test site in Falmouth isn't because our, our lack of testing. It's because the way that Dylan obtained the money, it had to be, that, that center has to be in Falmouth in terms of tests. It's not the test, it's the turnaround time for the tests.
Right. No, I understand that. Our labs are bogged down with the testing. We're overloading them with as many tests as we're able to give them. So I was thinking the National Guard only because, you know, we abut Otis. And they did have tents out there prior to, I know that was for patient care, but I, that's not what they're limited to. They're, you know, it's not like that's the only thing that we can utilize them for. I just didn't know if that was part of the conversation to help alleviate some of the lab burden.
Well, I don't know if they have the, the ability to do the nitty-gritty lab testing. I think if the state knew they could do that, they would have already done that. You know, having them out, setting up a tent to swab noses, we have enough people for that. The county's going to staff this with the 300 grand.
I don't think that it's a matter of obtaining a test.
Right. But as far as being, right. But, but as far as them having the skills to actually run the PCR, I mean, that's well above my pay grade. I don't know what they're doing at the state.
Okay. I just didn't know if that was part of your conversation with the reps. So that's fine. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'm following up on that, Scott. Do you know, and maybe it doesn't help if, if people are required to get a PCR test, but I know that a lot of the pediatric offices in town have in-house rapid tests now. So will that alleviate some of the, the overload at the labs? If some of those, you know, if some of those kids are getting tested in-house at the pediatric practices, but they're rapid?
Yeah. A rapid, accurate PC, PCR, molecular rather piece, because you would be running it through the machine. A rapid, accurate molecular test is the goal. It would be awesome. They do have them. The only caveat to that is we had, do you guys remember when we had the issues with the Caremark and the, the testing with those? There's a lot of data entry at the store level, at the Caremark level. So they have, and I know pediatricians offices will do a better job. So they have, and I know pediatricians offices will do a better job, but it's not going to a lab directly into Maven. So each one of these offices that decide to have this have to put it into Maven very quickly. All right, so you can't do data dumps and miss, you know, do a data dump every other day because it's, no one's getting on the case. So, you know, these, the PC, the rapid tests rely on that facility to submit to Maven and enter him into Maven and to start a case number to start the whole process. So that's the only caveat to that. It, it's got a little bit, instead of the computer automatically generating it, I'm sure the labs just have such a better setup for it. But yeah, I mean, being able to, you know, cull the herd, you're in, you're out, you're good to go back to school, you're not, you can go to work, you're not, in a quickly manner is, unfortunately, I think we're getting to the point where we'll end up having vaccines out before we get to the point where I like to be at that, you know?
With testing.
Yeah, and for, and if, you know, I heard good news about testing. If you guys like to hear some good news, I hate to be doom and gloom every day, is that there's eight hospitals in the state that are supposed to get their first vaccines on the eighth. They've chosen eight hospitals, which will not be our hospital. We are not at the same point that you see the North Shore and Boston getting hit. You know, all the really, really hard ones go to MGH, you know? So, you know, they're going to, they're going to start off, then you're going to see the rest of the hospitals get them for their staff. Probably by early January, you start seeing that happening, so, you know? You know, I'm starting to get a little nervous about how I'm going to have a standing vaccine center for the next, you know, conceivable three or four months. I can't, I can't ask Lori to use the high school. My, 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 back when anthrax and the scares that we had after nine 11, we have a game plan to vaccinate 25, 30,000 people within 48 hours using the high school, but I'm not going to do that. I can't do that. I'm not going to get the doses in such a manner that I could do it all at once anyway. So I'm going to need to have some sort of a standing area. So anybody out there has ideas of what place I can use? I've thought of some different areas and where I can have a standing large, you know, sort of setup with the tents permanently there. So, you know, that hopefully could be in the spring, summer.
Otis.
Yes, that's going to be a, that, that.
The fairgrounds.
Well, the fairgrounds are a problem because the fairgrounds does not have a lot of paved parking. So you get a bad rainstorm and it might be, you know, four wheel driving. So that's the only, another place I thought of was asking the steamship that giant parking lot near the ice arena might be another one too.
Oh, yeah.
So if anybody's got some ideas.
I will think on it.
Feel, feel free to email me because I'm starting that process now.
Yeah. John, did I see your hand up?
Well, yeah, just to follow up on that a little bit too, is what dates were you thinking of that, Scott? Just in general.
Well, as far as vaccines, it's always better to under, under promise and over deliver. So the state is sometime around mid to late summer.
Okay.
Right, you know, I think, you know, we talked about how we're going to get the vaccines in. First off, we got to make sure that we have enough sub 70 degree freezes, which we do, we, we've already got the MBL and we've talked to, we know that the Barnstable County test site for septic systems on the base has one for virus testing. We know that the hospitals have one, so, you know, we got to make sure we get that, which if I'm going to spend $10,000 on one, it's money well spent. I'm sure you guys as taxpayers wouldn't mind me spending $10,000 on a freezer that would hold it if I had to. But yeah, I mean, I think you'll start seeing first responders in the winter, you know? So you get the first responders, long-term care. The general population, you know, I guess I'm hoping late spring, but you know, the state's thinking more summertime for that. You know, because you're going to, because you're going to have to have two doses. It's very, you know, I, I don't have my head wrapped around how I'm going to do the two dose thing. You know, how are we going to do, manage the whole, you're going to come back in 30 days because we've wasted a shot on you if you don't.
Yeah.
Right?
Fair enough. And with your, your request for a suggestion of, of how to, you know, get the contact tracing advice to folks out there, I'm not sure if this exists. There are a lot of, in all of this situation, people do know that the, a general idea of things, then it's just a matter of whether they do it or not. But any, any information we can get out there, but I would think like a flow chart that would have, you know, all right, you contact tracing and then like the next step. And that would, you know, be helpful for folks of different languages as well. Just, you know, this happened, you, you, a person's positive, then, you know, then the next step is this and that sort of thing. And with relation Lori, to circle back to the schools, something similar would be helpful. I mean, I mean, as things happen, I mean, we, we're dealing with a difficult situation and you're able to do what you can do. And then everything can be analyzed after the fact of, you know, what can we do differently or what can we do well and everything? I think a similar thing of getting the word out of X happens, then Y happens next would be very helpful. You know, especially within relation to, you know, for future times, do we have, will we have enough staff that will always be, that'll be shut down for a period of time? Or, you know, what is, so when someone as a parent, myself, a parent of a high school student also, is just so, you know, I'm fine with the scenario as it, as it played out. But just to know ahead of time of X happens and Y is going to happen next, both for, you know, recommending what people should do, but also as parents and students that they're not surprised or anything like that of like, oh, this is natural as that's going to happen, that sort of thing. So I'll just throw that out to you both.
It, it would, it would have to be very generic because we have to run through these scenarios. No scenario happens to ever be the same. That's where the difficulty is. It's, it's, I get calls, at least a dozen calls a day from different groups of, you know, different people. You know, this happened on X day, that day, that day, what do we do? So I mean, it's very, you could do generics, but it's really hard and Lori's could probably laughing because it's like we, we try to think of every scenario and it comes up a little bit different. I mean, there's just basic rules, you're out for 40, 14 days, but the guidance changed last week. You can actually be out only 10 days on a quarantine if you get tested on day eight and you come back negative. So that changed last week, you can get a test on day eight, right? So I always said to you guys earlier on, you can never test out of quarantine, now you can. So the guidance does change, but in terms of, we can be generic about what we tell parents, but you know, each scenario, like why we banged out a classroom versus the entire school, you know, each scenario is sort of unique.
Yeah, but if you had a general baseline and then if you need to change it, you can change it just so you have something, you know? Any of those, those days like the 14, someone might say, oh, of course that's what it, what it is. Or someone might say, I had no idea that's what, you know, so having something anyways.
Andrea.
Thanks Kelly. You know, I, I know with all of these situations that time is really critical and the sooner that we can know information, the better. And so I was a little worried when Scott, you brought up the, the delays and things posting to Maven. And if I heard you correctly, you did say that the recommended things for the school would be for people to contact our public health nurse, our superintendent, principal, somebody, right? So that we could get that information potentially a little faster than it posts to Maven?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's going to depend. If the lab gets it done, it should hit Maven roughly the same time the parents called, should.
Okay.
If it's done through the, you know, the normal PCR, but you start getting to the rapid test methods and stuff like that and relies on a doctor's office to do it, you might have some delays. Also, the VNA, let's say they got 37 today, all right? Let's say the VNA is going to make 37 phone calls and that's the 37th on the line. Well, you can't make 37 phone calls in four minutes. So there's still that hours, no matter how well and how many staff you have, the more cases you have, it takes longer to go through it. Contact tracing takes on average 45 minutes per person. Right, so that, that, you can't, the VNA only has so many bodies, we only have so many bodies, everybody only has so many bodies. So, I mean, anytime you can, if you get the information, say it, right? So share it with us, you know, we could be ahead of it. You know, there's times where I'm telling an individual, but that's rare. It's usually the individual finds out, you know, you know, prior to hitting it, hitting Maven. So the, that's, you know, that's the way it is. Now with the CTC, they're taking a little bit longer to get a hold of somebody. That's where we're trying to fill in to make that initial reach out, to get you the information, to get Lori and Jennifer the information as quickly as we can. So, you know?
Yeah, and to, to add on to something that Leah had said earlier that I thought was great, was that idea of quarantining while you're awaiting test results. And I think that, that idea, like sometimes people are testing because they have symptoms and others are testing because they may have been anticipating travel or things like that. And so I think emphasizing that assumption that you're positive, right? We, any one of us could be at any time and assuming that and behaving accordingly is what is going to help make sure that happens. And so.
If I, if I may add to that, just, for example, if you're a healthcare worker and you're getting tested every two weeks, you just can't be quarantined the whole time, right? So you, you quarantine if you're symptomatic or you're exposed and you should absolutely be quarantining pending your results. It's not necessarily a requirement of travel because it's not an exposure, you're just being tested based on guidance. The guidance doesn't make sense to me in some regards because it says 48 hours, within 48 hours of return. So, you know, the typical, you know, if anybody's been on, oh, your spring break, right? That last night is the big night that you go out and you party hard, you're not going to catch that if you get a test the day before. And tests are better at five days after, you know? So ideally, what you would have is people, you know, quarantining for the five days after they got back, then getting tested would be the ideal, but it's not, it's kind of problematic. So generally speaking, you would, you, just because you're going to get a test because you're a healthcare worker, you wouldn't be quarantining. So it depends, it's specific. Again, if you're a contact or a case or you had symptoms, absolutely, you have to, not a case, but.
Lori, were you trying to say something to add on to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to two things. One, so we do, so anytime that we, we've asked staff or students to, to go, to be tested, right? They're put, because of symptoms or exposure, they are going into quarantine. Okay, so absolutely, that is our rule here and that is the, the message from our public health nurse. And, you know, Scott's helped us with that. So, you know, I wanted to clarify that as well. And, and it is true, I mean, the, the travel, it's confusing around the travel, right? And so if you were getting tested because you're getting ready to travel and you were waiting those results, you know, and in a case where you're not getting the results for, you know, a week and a half later, right? You're not quarantining during that time, right? So just, there are, there's so many, Scott pointed out, there are just so many different scenarios that it may look like we're not, you know, following the certain rules, but I just want to assure everybody that when we are aware of and we are asking someone to quarantine because of exposure or because of symptoms, we are, and getting tested, you, you stay home. Even the sibling rule under the symptoms, the siblings can't return until the test result comes back from the sibling that has symptoms. And I know that is an extra mitigating strategy that we're using here in Falmouth. It's just an extra step, but we're even following that. I also had a question, I wanted just to make sure that we clarified between the rapid testing and the, the PCR. My understanding, and Scott, correct me if that's changed recently, but they're only doing the rapid testing on those that are actually have symptoms. So those that have symptoms may, you know, if they get the rapid test, of course, it's still their choice. If they go to their doctor, they may order a PCR, not the rapid test. But they're doing the rapid test on symptomatic. If you're from exposure or close contact, you know, of any, any type, that's still the PCR test. So you still might be waiting a period of time for those results. Is that still true, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, the pediatricians are doing their, their guidance is what they're doing, right? So they set their internal, yeah. So I mean, I, you know, if they're symptomatic, they need to stay quarantined until they get the results regardless of the type of test. If it's a, if it's a, if it's a, what the DPH is saying is though, if you use an antigen, you really should go get a PCR after and quarantine in between if you cut positive on a, on a, on an antigen. You know, how exactly the doctor's offices are doing it is between them and DPH. You know, if they're going to make you with what you just said, works fine for me.
And I, I just had one question for, for you Lori about, because the explanation of how things happened at the high school was really staff related, which you expected would be a likely scenario. And so with another positive test result, has that changed anything in terms of the, the close contacts there, if that was different staff members and therefore would change what might be happening for reopening at the high school?
Luckily not, so we will be opening the high school on Friday. We are able to, you know, so everything is covered and we won't have to, even though there will be staff and students that will be quarantined beyond Friday into the next week, we will not have to close the school. So I, you know, and that's just some of it circumstantial and some of it is just that extra little time of being able to plan.
Great, that's wonderful, thanks.
Melissa, then Leah.
Thanks, just a thought, I know that some of the Boston hospitals are doing the initial test and then they are, like Scott was mentioning, doing a test five days later. I wouldn't be opposed to have, to opening a discussion on that. I don't know what that would look like, but certainly not now, but depending on how things go, I just wouldn't be opposed to talking about it.
What do you mean, but you mean as far as who's getting tested in the hospital?
So staff, so they test and if they've, like the standard chat, like with, I've gone to Florida and I have my test within 48 hours. And then they come to work with their negative test. And then NAMC, New England Medical Center is one example. And then they're asking their staff to test again five days later.
It's good science.
Yeah, it just, something to think about. I wouldn't, like I said, I wouldn't be opposed to having that conversation. I just kind of wanted to put that on the radar.
Not, not, not surprised the scientist brought that one up.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Leah, did you still have something?
Yes, yeah. So one thing that I have definitely learned over these last two months is how well the schools are handling this and that there are companies that are handling this very well too. And there's hot, the medical field is handling it very well. But I worry, and this is just going back to my point, I worry about the small businesses and the, the other people who don't have all of these resources that we have. Because I think just like to Lori's point, we have all of these strict guidelines about if, if a child or if a staff member is showing any symptoms that might be COVID symptoms, right? And that we do, that students and staff need to be quarantined, they need to get tested, you know, all of these requirements. But when it comes to our community and the community spread, there are many other people within our community who might not be part of the schools or might not be part of our medical field and don't have all of this knowledge base and resources. So I just, you know, like I said, being on the other side of this now and seeing how community spread happens, that it's not happening in our schools because we are so well-equipped for this. We have been preparing for this and we are ready. And just, you know, a perfect example of Lori, how you handled this, this, this week, you know? It's, and you're able to reopen on Friday. So just to reiterate that, I just think that we, it's a community piece and however the schools can support the community to do a better job in, in keeping everyone safe or as good a job as the schools are, I, I would really appreciate that within our community. And I don't know what that looks like, but just.
But that's a good point, you know, because what's happening in the community is what we're then going to see in the schools.
Yeah, and we'll see it in the schools, we will, we'll be able to protect.
Yeah.
You know?
Thankfully, yeah.
But yeah.
The health department's done hundreds of compliance checks based on complaints since this started. So, you know, complaint based, we have no problem going out there. We've issued fines, we've done corrections, we've spent half a day with people laying out their places for them to help them out. So, I mean, there's a certain segment of the population that just doesn't care, it's just going on its business as usual. And it's hard to find who they are. I'm not going to lie to you, not everybody, not everybody thinks this is a big deal. It is what it is, you know? So I mean, you know, we, we do, we do as much fight, we fight that fight every day. And it's very complaint based, you know? If, if you see stuff out there, we'll go out and follow up. We follow up on just about everyone, you know, we do. But as far as getting them to buy in, don't know the answer to that. I think if we could figure that out, we'd be in so much, you know, I mean, if we, if we could, if we could bottle that and sell it, we'd make a lot of money, I guess one way to look at it.
Bill, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I get really concerned with Lori when you mentioned the fact that student had the test prior to Thanksgiving and now comes back and we finally find out that is positive. So I'm looking at that length of time and saying, how many more are out there because of this length of time? That's a concern. And Scott, I guess to you, is there anything that can speed up the process with the exception of the vaccine that we can get better time relationship as to the testing process and procedure? I think that's where I come up a little bit concerned that it can blow up at any minute.
Well, the delay in that particular case, I. Well, the delay in that in particular case, I think, had to do with, was in the wrong town or a different town. I mean, it did screw things up. Sharing cases is a pain. The problem with Maven is Maven was set up to do tuberculosis, three hepatitis and a pertussis case. Okay, it's not set up for volume, it's set up for quality, not quantity. If Scott ran Maven, he would shred the seven-page document and narrow it down to five or ten, fifteen minutes max. Because you can do four times the work that you can do when you, look, some of the questions you have to ask is, what was your temperature? You know, what do you have for symptoms? That's only good for Harvard, you know, researchers, five years later to do a study on COVID. It doesn't matter right now. It really truly doesn't matter. It's you, 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 you're out, you, you're in, you can keep going to work. Where do you work? We're going to close that place down for twenty four hours, do a deep clean, you're out, you're out, you're out, go on to the next one. That's what contact tracing for COVID should be. I'm not the smartest guy in the room when I'm with DPH, that's just my opinion. I would gut how we're doing contact tracing because it's just very rigorous and time-consuming and daily follow-ups. All right, I think we need, that's kind of what we're doing here, is we're going to do a quick and dirty, sort of get the basic questions out of the way as much as it's going to add, I just had a fight with CTC about it. That's what we're going to do, but the CTC is going to continue on doing what they're doing. That's, I think, biggest problem is, is that it just is the time constraint, the time on that. I think, you know, does that answer your question? Okay, because I was on this rant about four fifteen after before I got on the call with you about this, so I'm sorry. My day job to my night job. Yeah, the timelines might have been, you know, I don't, I don't have the details. I can't go on that case, it's math.
Right, right.
Okay, I can't go on that case and tell you why it's delayed. Is there delays? Yes. And part of it's because if it goes to the CTC and they send a phone call, they don't just keep, a lot of times people just don't return their phone call. So the CTC immediately texts you and he, and sends you a phone call. If you never respond to it, it's going to be lost the follow-up. We're not going to know anything. And that's part of the issue. It's, so it's, it's trying to be more dogged about it, you know. There's not a lot of teeth in the law in this country about content is quarantining and isolation. You know, some of the other countries that have been successful is they have a little bit stronger teeth into it, you know, but we don't. And we rely on the, you know, like I say, I was using your example as the grumpy guy that doesn't want to give me any info. If that happens, I can't, I won't know that your, you know, your son or daughter, grandkid is at school. We have to fight for that, you know. It helps that I know so many names and it helps that I've kind of can figure things out. And I oversend to Jen, right? So I oversend stuff. If I see somebody who lives alone that's seventy two, I'm not nearly as worried. You know, we hit, do have to see if they see all their kid, but it's not perfect. And there's no way to make that part of the particular part perfect because not everybody's going to answer the questions the same.
All right, thank you.
But we've been really good at figuring it out, though. We've really been sleuthing these out, really like, you know, sometimes I think I got some mad skills going on when I say. I I sense this one has a child and I'm. So, you know, we're getting pretty good at it. Jen's awesome. So, you know, we've got as good a system as we can conceivably have in place.
So Lori, I have one question for you. So, you know, of course, we want everybody to be safe. We don't want kids that have been exposed to be in schools. But is there anything that we can do about the staff shortage? I mean, do we have capacity to hire more subs? Is there money to hire more subs? Are we in a position that? Because I I do feel like the community, you know, Falmouth always comes together when we need to get stuff done. And I, I, I do believe there have got to be people out there who, if they knew that the reason the school shut is because we don't have enough subs, that they would, they'd come out and be like, I can do that. So is that a possibility?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. It's an excellent question and it gives me an opportunity to kind of ask the community to help at this point. So I I don't know how many more subs we can afford to bring on full-time. I think if I, as explained before, we brought on a number of subs that are assigned full-time to each building. And so they move throughout the building as needed, you know, they come in every day. If, you know, if they're not all needed on a certain day, that's just extra hands. But we were committed to that because of situations as yesterday. But what we are looking for, and we could bring on a few more at the high school full-time. But what we're really looking for now would be someone that may not want to work full-time, but would be willing to help. And would be assigned to a building, we would still just have them assigned to one building, but they would be kind of on-call. So kind of a day-to-day sub, that they'd be willing to come in if we need them. If we'd had a number of those yesterday that we could have called, but we are really having, we, we don't have anybody that's interested in that. And we, and it is not for the lack of trying. I again will give a shout out to Jawani. She does an excellent job searching, asking questions, asking everyone she knows, pass the word around, calling retirees. Calling people that, just trying to, you know, word of mouth is is really good, right? So, you know, kind of calling up on our current staff to reach out to people, like I said, the retirees, college students that are home and that, you know, could possibly, you know, help out now. But to have that on-call list and assigned per building and why it's so important at the high school. The high school is unique and they need to be trained, right? So if you're going to be a sub in the high school, you kind of, you've got to know, every school is important that you know the kind of the rules of the school beyond the safety rules. Because everybody has those. But the high school is unique, how the, you know, the subbing works and and being in the, the different classrooms. So we would love to have people onboard, assigned to the high school, come in for a day of training. And then just be available for a phone call when we need you, that we might be able to bring you in. So thank you for that opportunity.
No, I just think it's really important. And I think it's a, there's a difference between looking for people who are looking for work, which there are certainly plenty of people who are unfortunately out of work right now. But there's also people who would do it because they want to give, so for what that's worth.
Let me give another shout out. Like most of, even when our staff is quarantined, they get to work with the students remotely. Even some that have symptoms that may not be feeling well, like they might have a headache, a scratchy throat, pre-COVID would have come to work anyway, right? You know, because we all do that. But now we can't because it's a symptom, right? And so you got to stay home. So a lot of times we just need the, the, a sub to be in the classroom so that we have.
While the teacher teaches.
And they actually don't have to do the teaching. So I don't know if that would be more appealing to some people that might, you know, step up and help. The teachers are really, they want to teach, right? I mean, they may be told to be at home, but they want to teach remotely. And so we, we have that opportunity, availability now for that to happen. So we, we really need just supervisory in in the classrooms. Now, not saying that we don't, always need, you know, we, we certainly may need the teacher subs from time to time. And that's certainly helpful. And we do have the sub plans already, you know, planned for the, with the students. But, but really, most of the time, we have our staff working from home remotely into the classroom. So I don't know if that's appeal, you know, makes it more appealing.
It might, but I think that, you know, we can all do our share and, and try and reach out to whoever we know and see if we can find some extra people because it would be great if this isn't the, the reason that we have to close.
Yes, I agree. It was a, it was sad to have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard on everybody, kids especially. So, all right, any last parting thoughts or are we going to move on? Okay, Scott, thank you so much for joining us for all the updated information. We always appreciate it. Take care.
See ya.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so now the.